This is Lisa Miller and Associates Florida Insurance Roundup, your podcast on the people, issues, and regulations shaping Florida's insurance market. Now here's Lisa Miller.
Welcome friends. The upcoming special session of the Florida Legislature scheduled to begin December 12th is supposed to focus on two issues that the governor has spotlighted. Provide property tax relief to victims of devastating Hurricane Ian, along with possibly other economic relief, and address our ongoing property insurance crisis that you've heard us discuss in many of our Florida Insurance Roundup podcasts in the past. The governor has said that past efforts this year to try to solve some of the property insurance problems and provide additional consumer protections just didn't go far enough. And he specifically wants, and he said this, to quote stabilize the market and introduce more competition and policies that will lower prices for consumers. As many of you know, six Florida property insurance companies have become insolvent this year. Eleven total since November of 2019. And you know, there's a special watch list the Insurance Commissioner has. He's not advertising the names of those companies. But to say that we're in a very perilous position is an understatement. So what specific remedies do you think the legislature should or will do? We'll be talking with some guests about that for this wonderful edition of the Florida Insurance Roundup. I was recently asked by the Florida Housing Coalition to talk about the upcoming special session. And I had the privilege of sitting down with former Florida State Representative Andrew Learned, a Democrat from the Tampa Bay area. And I was joined by Deb Franklin, co-CEO of the Peak Six Insuretech firm, also owner of the WeInsure Agency chain with about 150 offices in Florida. This company offers property and casualty coverage in Florida, as well as they have insurance agents that sell coverage for many of our companies in Florida. And the audience for this webinar were those from the Florida Housing Coalition, which is an incredible organization made up of housing developers, realtors, contractors, just great partners in the housing space in the state of Florida. You'll hear some very interesting questions and answers that followed and discussions as well when we had a really good chance to sit down and talk about what may happen December 12th in our upcoming special session. So here we go. The governor sees and hears from constituents, much like you, me, all of us that have property. We've seen our insurance rates go up 30, 40, 50, so much as 70, 80%. I talked to a consumer yesterday, he's a retiree. His policy last year was $1,700. He got his renewal and it's $3,200. He's on a fixed income, he's very concerned. And he was going to get in the car and drive to go see his senator, which I encouraged him to do. And he asked me the question of why. And so I'm going to start with that question of why and what our distinguished guests are seeing out in the field with Representative Learned and his reach in the Tampa Bay area, with Deb and Deb Franklin and her WeInsure agents across the state. And so I'll start with Deb. I'll let her tell you a little bit more about her and her background. And then I'll ask her this, and I'll have her answer this question. What are your insurance agents that are your team members, your colleagues, seeing every single day in this insurance marketplace? Deb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Lisa, thanks for having me. And thanks to everyone on the phone who's helping Florida recover from the catastrophe. I'm a Floridian born and raised. Have run an agency in Florida myself, done the claims stint. So kudos to all the claims adjusters who are working their tail ends off 24/7 right now, trying to help all the consumers. These consumers don't get it, they don't understand. Their rates are climbing or they're being non-renewed or canceled. The conversations are long. There's a lot of education that needs to go on in the agents' offices. So you've got added pressures of increased phone call volume, longer hold times, longer discussions in an environment where there's pressure on wages. So you could imagine as a small business owner, some of the pressures they're seeing. They are also Floridians, they have their own pressures that they are under, right? The same exact things happening to them. So I can't wait for Andrew to tell me what he's hearing in his seat to see if it's similar in nature. It's extremely stressful right now for agents, for sure.
And real quick Deb, as a follow-on to that, how many agents, insurance agents are a part of your organization in Florida?
Well, you hit on it, over 150 locations and then could be three, four to 15 per office. So quite a large group.
Got you. And every day, these insurance agents are talking to customers whose rates have gone up, helping to try find alternative coverage when their policies were non-renewed, and trying to answer the question, why are my rates doubling and tripling?
Yes, and while they're getting knocks on the doors from people soliciting, you know, to replace the roof, they don't understand, they don't understand what an assignment of benefits is. So we're walking through that as carefully as we can. The questions are complicated, very complicated.
Absolutely. Representative Learned, give us your perspective. Talk about assignment of benefits. Recognizing the people on this particular webinar may not be familiar with some of the terms that we use quite frequently in the insurance industry. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks for having me and thanks everybody for being here. I, you know, it's funny because when you're in the legislature, you typically don't come from the industry that you end up working in, right? So I was a trigger puller in the Navy. I own a small tutoring company. I don't do anything with insurance. Certainly, I'm not a lawyer and I don't like to officiate and referee fights between big insurance companies and lawyers. But you know, you get elected in a crisis mode and you know, we're talking a couple of years ago before any of these hurricanes really hit, and we were already at the brink of collapse. I mean, Lisa, you're saying people are having rate increases of 30, 40%, but I'm sure we've all heard stories of people who've been tripled or doubled and people who've been dropped entirely and have no access to insurance. And that kind of skirts around the fact that what we've essentially done is privatized or socialized our insurance market, all of the risk of all these policies into citizens, which is essentially the taxpayers and anybody who owns a car. So like my wife was complaining the other day about the rate of auto insurance. Well, a lot of people don't realize a lot of the reason Florida has the highest auto insurance rates in the country is because it's the backstop for all of our failed homeowners' policies. So this is affecting the affordability in the state, whether you rent a small apartment, which I used to do, or whether you own a big house, whether it's on the beach or whether you're inland, none of that matters. A huge driver of all of our costs is coming from this. And the state is already on the hook for tens of billions of dollars if there's another storm and citizens gets a big hit. So definitely a thing that we hear every single day because everyone complains about affordability. And I think this is the number one driver of it, at least in the state of Florida.
And what we were hearing, there was a recent statistic by the Insurance Commissioner that may shock all of you on this webinar, that Florida, while we have about seven and a half million property insurance policies, about seven and a half million homeowners have a property insurance policy, renters, mobile home, et cetera. And of all those policyholders, only about, of all those that might file a claim, only about 8% of those that have homeowners' policies file claims across the country. So imagine 50 states, only about 8% of all the claims ever filed in the United States are filed in Florida, among our seven and a half million policies. But yet we have 80% of all the lawsuits across the country. So if you were to total up all the lawsuits of all across 50 states, we have 80% of those filed in Florida. Yet of all the claims, we only have 8%. So that statistic was released by the Insurance Commissioner a year ago. And it's really gotten the attention of a lot of our legislators to say, huh, wonder why we have so many lawsuits. And so I'll turn it back over to Representative Learned and let him tell us why he believes that we seem to become unfortunately the number one place for lawsuits in the United States.
Yeah, well, you know, it's not just that either. It's, I think the same report said that the average payout on a lawsuit, the homeowner only got about 9% of it. So upwards of 90% is going, is being split between lawyers and insurance companies lawyers and everybody's getting rich except for the people who lost their home in the first place. So you know, there's no such thing as a free roof, right? Like that's, that is the basic statement that starts the entire conversation. We have all had the knock on our door recently from a roofer who's telling us, oh, you know, I see a couple of shingles missing. Can I get up there, do an inspection for you? Once they get up, they say, oh yeah, you got damage. And by the way, I know a guy who can probably get this done for you for free. You just have to sign here, you'll assign your benefits. And the homeowner has no idea that they just signed themselves up to a lawsuit. A lot of times that lawsuit is settled without them even knowing. The roofer gets paid directly and then they go back and do the work. And quite honestly, like why wouldn't you take that deal if you're the homeowner, right? You're getting a free roof paid for by all of your neighbors. Like you don't have to come out of pocket for anything, right? Like every, Lisa's gonna like bristle when I say this, but everybody should do it. And it's on us, the legislature, it's on the people that are in power now, it's on the governor to stop this practice because this is what's bankrupting our state right now. Because you're right Lisa, you can't be 8% of the claims across the country and 75% of all the lawsuits with most of that money going to an industry of lawyers and people that are profiting off the practice. And it's leaving the homeowners out to dry.
So true.
Also destroying the marketplace for insurance. So private markets are running out of the state as fast as they can because they can't afford to operate here. So, and believe it or not, most of the Florida companies reside in Florida. So the employees are impacted and being laid off. So it's a cyclical thing that happens. So Citizens is designed to be the insurer of last resort, but they are now the largest insurance company in the state because there's caps on how much rate they can take. That's another thing that should be changed. We should look to Louisiana for what they've done recently with a 63% rate increase in Citizens, bringing back the private market. They put rules in place. And one more point that I want to bring to bear that we haven't talked about widely is that in November of 2021, the two-year treasury note was returning 0.567%. November 22, we're at 4.47%. Florida has a 4% cap on how much margin you can make on a homeowner's insurance. So I tell you that to go, no one wants to bring capital into a state where they have the risk of fraud, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that anymore, social inflation, and no return on their capital when they could park it in a two-year treasury and be guaranteed 4.4. So it's a, the complications continue.
Very, very good. And what Deb, just to reinforce what she's saying, you know, it takes a lot of money to run an insurance company. The regulators, the rating agencies, they require insurance companies to have 30, 40, 50 million dollars to be able to pay their claims, sitting in a bank account somewhere to be able to pay their claims. And that money, if it gets paid the way it's being paid to all the lawyers, it drains what's called their surplus, their ability to pay their claims. So we've lost, you know, half a dozen or more insurance companies that have gone bankrupt. And we're, you know, the anticipation is that two or three will go bankrupt. And the governor's recognizing all this because his phones are ringing off the hook. People asking why, why are my rates up? And it's three simple reasons. One, the knock on the door, roofing solicitors that convince people to file a claim when really that shouldn't be a claim. They've got normal wear and tear, which is our responsibility as a homeowner, or the roof could be repaired and not replaced. A few shingles are missing and get that taken care of. Or they have their favorite lawyer that's dying to get some attorney's fees and they'll convince the homeowner, let's just sue your insurance company to get you what you want. That is driving rates. Every time someone gets a free roof, we're all paying for it. The second reason that we're seeing our rates go up is because the weather. The weather's very serious. I mean, we saw what Hurricane Ian is doing. These storms are more severe. It's going to take more reinsurance for us to support the insurance companies. So the weather's another reason. And then lastly, you know, when claims are filed, it becomes popular. If you think, you know, for example, if you have someone that's called like a public adjuster that comes to your door, those are adjusters that work supposedly for the consumer and not adjusters that work for the insurance companies. They'll, a lot of times these unscrupulous public adjusters, they're not all bad. But some will say, look, let's add this damage that happened maybe in a prior problem and add it to this claim, or let's inflate this claim. They don't say it publicly, but they get paid based on the size of the claim. So you have what I'll say nefarious activities that are causing rates, claims to cost to go up. You've got solicitations and people being encouraged to file claims where they would have never filed one before. Then you have all the litigation that's driving these costs for us. Let's move on to, you heard Deb talk about Citizens Property Insurance. Right now, our government's insurance company, which is all of us on this call are paying for the government's insurance company. There's about a million policies in that company of the seven and a half million that I mentioned that are part of the market. Their rates are capped over the next few years up to 15%. So you and I that aren't in Citizens are paying rate increases of, as you heard me say, 40, 50, 60%. Those of you that own your homes on the call can certainly see what it's costing for rate increases. I'm going to let Deb talk about what should Citizens Property Insurance look like? What is a residual market? What does that mean? And when you talked about Louisiana, you know, that Louisiana's doing the right thing. If you could explain to this audience that, you know, how these residual markets, markets of last resort are supposed to be higher than the market. Explain and explain what happened while Florida got turned upside down, Deb?
So the markets of last resort are to be the last resort. So there are the risks that the private side either can't get adequate rate or doesn't want to underwrite. So it should be the homes that, you can pick several different reasons, whether it's, you know, age, condition of the home, proximity to water. It used to be that it would just be like windfall, like around the coast, different reasons. But because the market is so upside down, Citizens is less than the private market. So you'll get your renewal in the mail, say it's $7,500 off of, used to be $3,500 and you can get a Citizens policy for $2,500. And most families in this inflationary environment need that money to stretch further. So we understand why they're going there, but it should be the opposite. We should have a real market where companies are competing for your business and that is keeping the prices stable. I don't know if I hit on all the points there.
You hit the points. So our market of last resort is cheaper than the private market that the six million of us are paying our policies for. And we've got to flip that around and that was.
And we're profitable. And they're more profitable by far. It's insane.
Yes, they are. Citizens is doing quite well. And I know it's hard for those on this call to grasp, but the government's insurance companies should not be doing better than the private companies. Why? Because all of us, if something were to happen to the government's insurance company, all of us collectively are going to have to bail out that company, that government insurance company. Representative Learned, any comments about that? I know you have, there's a lot of insured policyholders in the Tampa Bay area that have Citizens Property Insurance.
Yeah, it's growing and it's the definition of what happens when you privatize the profits and then socialize the losses, right? That's essentially what we've done in the state of Florida. And I'll hold my tongue as to how we got here.
Okay, sounds good.
But it can be changed.
I will say, you know, Lisa, I want to say too, it's not that insurance in the state of Florida is easy in the first place, right? Like we exist in Hurricane Alley. We have all, like I lost a roof when a tree fell on my house back when Charlie hit in 2004. Like this is a state that has been grappling with this for a long time. And everybody on this call or anybody listening later on, like, is probably looking at this from the lens of these recent storms and like, oh my gosh, are these storms going to bankrupt us? The short answer is no. Like we are perfectly capitalized to deal with all of the structural losses from these storms. The problem is the inflated, like the multiplier that gets put on due to the litigation that comes later in the process, right?
Because we can't price for it.
If we're able to process these, yeah, if we're able to process these claims and get them out the door quickly, people will get their homes back, they get it repaired as quickly as possible. It's when that, you know, a couple of shingles becomes a water claim times a litigation claim on top of that. And you have a $12,000 repair that now costs $200,000 at the end. But that insurance company has to turn around and price into their model for the year, the next year, right? So if you're seeing a price increase right now, that is not the result of the hurricane that hit last month. This is the result of the litigation that happened last year before a hurricane ever hit our shores. So like, I guess the doomsday scenario is you've got to buckle up because it's about to get a lot worse when all these recent claims start getting, start hitting.
So we know as insurance professionals and public servants, et cetera, that it just makes sense to have a quote well-functioning property insurance market. That it's not the government's job to be in the hamburger business or the furniture business or the insurance business. And we can look no further to the flood insurance program of the National Flood Insurance Program. That's the federal government's insurance program. And they've had a devil of a time over the past 50 years with deficits and not being able to be charging enough. They've had subsidized rates. This has been one of the issues with Hurricane Ian. All of you on this call know of people who didn't have flood insurance, didn't have enough flood insurance. And the whole discussion about flood versus wind, what caused that claim. Deb, you were down with Southwest Florida in ground zero. You spent, I mean, you lived down in that area, but you, I saw you on the front lines talking to consumers. What did you hear moving on to the flood insurance questions? And the government's in that business. What do you think about the whole flood insurance piece? And what should we be doing to educate consumers? What should be happening with that, with respect to that?
I've been a flood nerd for a really long time. Pushed flood for a really long time. Unfortunately, the FEMA line would back up through the entire Cat Village. And these people were waiting in line because they didn't have the flood coverage, right? So they were going to get assistance for specifically that. So when you're asking them, why didn't you have flood coverage? The compounding effect of the pricing increase with risk grading 2.0, another thing in our industry that we've dealt with, maybe some of you are more familiar with it. Priced people out of being able to afford the coverage. It's, they just couldn't afford it. So the numbers of closed without pay claims on the property side, by the words, they open a claim, they call us, we go out and we go, darn, it's flood. They don't get a dollar from their homeowner's insurance company. And the only place to go then is FEMA for assistance. And I'll say, the flood losses are the worst. You lose everything, everything's gone. These people's belongings, including their children's clothes and toys, are out in front of their home. It's the worst case scenario for consumers.
Andrew, you live in ground zero, basically. Tampa Bay area is going to flood. I mean, if Ian had gone through Tampa, I think you were probably more scared than most and how awful that would have been. What kind of preparation were y'all doing waiting for Ian to come? What was going through your office and your colleagues when Ian was barreling down thinking it was going to hit Tampa Bay?
Well, I mean, that's the thing with insurance, right? Like by the time you get the notification of storms coming, all you can do is pick up the lawn debris and hunker down. I mean, that's, and then just hope for the best. The time to prepare for these things is years in advance when we make sure that we design a system that works, right? We, you know, Florida, my region dodged a bullet. And I think that's something that we continue to be lucky for in Tampa. Unfortunately enough for Fort Myers and the area of south. But when that big one hits the bay and all that water comes up and you've got downtowns that are at 10 feet and, you know, it's going to get ugly really fast. And we need to be prepared for that.
We need to be prepared for it and we need to be insured for it. Let's, let's move on from flood insurance. And I'd love to talk about what I see this legislation, this legislation becoming. One other topic that we haven't talked about that's a little more complicated than both flood insurance and Citizens and litigation is reinsurance. And reinsurance is insurance for insurance companies. It's sold in worldwide markets in Bermuda and London and that type thing. And it's, it helps insurance companies shore up their finances to pay claims is the way to look at it. And I've been reading articles, I'm sure you've seen them Deb, so have you Representative Learned, where the reinsurance company executives are saying, why am I putting my money in Florida with all this, they call it social inflation? You know, people increasing the value of their claim or trying to inflate their claims or just doing some things that probably they didn't do 10 years ago because it's become popular because attorneys encourage them to do it, whatever happens. And the reinsurers, excuse me, are questioning, I've got my money, as you said Deb, I can put my money in a treasury and not watch it sit idle or get lost in the insurance market. Deb, you're close, you just came back from London. What is the reinsurance market saying? And are they going to be here for Florida for 2023? What are your thoughts?
They'll be here for the right price. And because companies are not capitalized right now the way they should be, a lot of them aren't going to be able to buy coverage. And to what, we had two hurricanes this season. So in a reinsurance event after Ian, they have to choose to bet on a reinstatement, whether they're going to reinstate the coverage for the year or gamble on we're not going to have another storm. So we have some that didn't choose that, that are in limbo because they couldn't afford to. Combined with rates going up 35 to even 50%, we've heard online for various coverages. And remember, it's compounded worldwide. So it's world events that take place, not just Florida. It's climate change everywhere. It's global events that are happening that impact where they're going to deploy capital. And they also are compounded by auto insurance on the rise with different things happening in the auto world. So no one's, if it was your personal checkbook, I'm sure none of you are running out and going, let me write a check to back the Florida Insurance Company right now. And it's millions and millions and millions of dollars at risk.
I know those of you on this call are not feeling sorry for insurance companies. Let's face it, they drive us crazy, we have to have them. If I hear it once, I hear it 100 times. I hate insurance companies. They're a bunch of greedy SOBs, they're trying to take my money. Listen, we don't all send Christmas cards to insurance companies as insurance professionals here. Insurance companies are necessary. And when your house burns down or your car is wrecked, you want to have this coverage. So this is not a webinar about, you know, God bless America and insurance companies. This is a webinar to make sure you're aware that when you get questions from people just at the grocery store in your Sunday school class, or when you're in the shop, does anybody go to a shopping mall anymore? I guess not. But that, you know, people are saying, my gosh, my rates went up. We want to arm you on this call to say, well, let me tell you why. Litigation is out of control. All these buses that we see that have the wraps of the, you know, they're wrapped with XYZ law firm, let us sue your insurance company. That's to me, every other commercial on TV, let us help you sue your insurance company. That is what is driving, I'd say 70% of all the rate that is, that is being charged to policyholders. Listen, every single rate increase that happens, the Insurance Commissioner has to approve. There are no.
It's all regulated. That's a great point.
All regulated.
Everything, we can't get away, they can't get away with anything. They're audited, like.
Go ahead Deb.
No, I mean, they're audited, it's publicly filed information. You can go pull financials of these insurance companies. Like they are not getting away with murder. I promise you, it's not happening, especially in Florida.
So the rates, the rates that are going up are approved by the Insurance Commissioner so that these people can keep their doors open. The question is, what is the, what is the pinnacle? When will it stop? How do we get it from doing this to starting to do this? To starting the rates to start to decline? Or to at least soften the amount of rate increases? We have, we watch what the Insurance Commissioner does. He's a very strong stalwart for consumers. Insurance agents that sell these policies and sell for insurance companies, they're heavily regulated. I would, I would give you four or five different tools and I'll bat these back to both Deb and to Representative Learned. First of all, when you see a solicitor in a neighborhood, my motto is, people you know come to your back door, people you don't know come to your front door. Don't answer your front door, just don't answer it. And that has resonated throughout the marketplace. I do a lot of consumer programs. And if you don't answer that door, there's no one that can shove in front of you a tablet to say, sign here, I'll take care of everything. Or let me get you a free kitchen. That's the other thing that's going on. Not only free roofs they're offering, but they'll say, do you have a stain underneath your peat trap in your kitchen, for your kitchen sink? That means you have a leak and we'll get you a free kitchen. That's a whole nother scam that's going on. So if you see solicitors in your neighborhood, call law enforcement. Just tell them, you need to get out of our neighborhood. You don't have any business being here preying on people in our neighborhood. Just shoo them away if you can. I met with a group of realtors in Pensacola. They were going to meet with their sheriff and see if the sheriff would give them a phone number to call to tell people to get out of their neighborhoods. Pretty strong approach. Pretty strong approach, but they're sick of it as well. So, that's number one, you as a, as a citizen in this state, you know, don't answer your door, tell your neighbors not to answer your door, don't, this is a really popular trend for these solicitors to be in the neighborhood. Number two, if you're involved with groups of people, if you're at a cocktail party, or you're, you're at the office at the water cooler, if you're going to the office, a lot of us are still working remote, have a converse, engage people to talk about this, to, to protect people, particularly those of you that are working with the, you know, I know many of you do a lot of public service that are listening, you're in the housing industry, you're helping people find how to pay their rent, you're helping them find housing. Tell them, be careful of people that are coming to your door, don't sign anything. There is a phone number I'm going to give you, that I'll have Dana put up in her show notes, where you can call the Department of Financial Services, they've got an 800 line, and that 800 line is very helpful, it's 1-800-342-2762. They've got several other 800 numbers, but it's 1-800-342-2762. There are people that answer those phones to tell you general information about insurance and what to do. So be sure, and share that number out there in the marketplace, that's, comes under the auspices of Chief Financial Officer Jimmy Patronas, and his team does a great job, I used to work there, very proud to be associated with them. Number three, what you can do, is you can contact your legislators. And I've given to Dana some information about who to contact, and how to write what that letter should say, you see my email address and phone number there, I'm happy to have you, you know, write a personal letter, my rates have gone up to so-and-so, what, here's what I think we need to do, get a handle on litigation, make citizens charge more so that the million that are sitting there pay what we pay, the other 6 million of us that are having to pay. Deb, Andrew, I've talked a little too much, what would you suggest that they do? Andrew, you've worked with constituents, what do you suggest they do?
Yeah, well, I want to summarize something you said, just to make it really simple for people, too, because it's, look, again, like, this is a really good deal for the homeowner, right? Like, that's the reason it's so prolific. The paradigm shift people need to make is, is don't think about your own roof, right? When your neighbor gets a free roof, it's funded by your increased property rates, right? Like, that's the problem. It's like you're paying for all of your neighbors. So when you see these guys go through the neighborhood, that's why Lisa's saying, you got to say something, because even if, like, for whatever reason, if you don't take the offer, or whatever, you don't answer your door, like, all of your neighbors are getting it funded by you. And that's what's raising all these prices, and then that trickles through. And, and Lisa, you started by saying, like, nobody has, like, love for the insurance company. I am, like, peak in that, right? Like, when I, you know, as a, as a legislature, like, we work for the people, nobody's paying, we get $28,000 a year to do this silly job, right? Like, I work for my tutoring company, and that is what I do every day. So I have no vested interest in helping insurance companies. And to be honest, I think they do a terrible job. The problem is, they do a terrible job because they are constantly having to beat back fraud claims. And if your job was to weed through 200 claims of fraud to find the one or two people who had a legitimate problem where their house was, like, literally sinking into a sinkhole, or had their roof blown off in a tornado, but you had, you know, 98% of your claims were somebody who just missed five shingles because of the thunderstorm last week, and a roofer solicited them, like, it is understandable why the insurance company would be, you know, so tight with their money, right? They're so tight to pay their claims out, which is causing everybody to have lawyers in the first place. Lawyers are like the one organization in the world where they, like, have created an industry for themselves, right? Like, more lawyers breed more lawyers, and this is where we're at, we're at this, like, snowballing effect, where it's now permeating the prices we pay for everything, right? So, what should people do? Like, just, you know, don't encourage your neighbors to get the free roof, right? Like, don't talk about, like, this is a problem, and we absolutely have to crack down on it because it's going to bankrupt us if we don't.
I'd say that the other one is as simple enough, is when they're advertising the yard signs in front of their yard, I got a free roof, call and see how you can get a free roof. Don't let them. Call the homeowners association, like, make them take it out. Like, it's crazy to me that they're allowed to solicit this information, it's all over my neighborhood. It's crazy. And then, the other point that we didn't make that's tactically fundamental for you as homeowners, citizens have less coverage than the private market. Yes, I know the pricing gap is significant enough for you to take the risk, but you only have $100,000 in liability. You have that roofer on your roof, and he doesn't have insurance, and he falls off, he's also going to sue you, making you exposed to be anything over $100,000. And they're, they're experienced at understanding how to get a claim above that, and how to litigate. And lastly, for me, insurance is math, it's just math. When did you ever do an algebraic problem, or solve some math where the answer was free in any of your career? Never. It's math. And this math doesn't make sense.
And, and the math does not make sense. All right, it's about 2:20, and I'm going to let our guests kind of close out, and then we'll take some questions, if we have any questions, any comments before I open it up to questions, both Deb or Andrew, would you like to hear questions first? Let's do questions. Let me see here, I hear excellent information. Are there any written documents that we can share? I have a library on my website, lisamillerassociates.com, and it says, the tab that says newsletters, podcasts, and library, there, you could spend your life reading everything from what is an assignment of benefit document, which is a terrible document, you never want to get duped into signing anything, including that document, because it locks you in to being in an arrangement with a lawyer that you never even knew you were going to be in an arrangement with. There's documentation there about what this crisis is about, you can certainly use any of it, it's all public for you. And there's a dedicated page, if you, if you pull down services, it says, assignment of benefits, litigation. So just kind of poke around in my website, and you'll see all kinds of fun things there. And if you see things that we could improve, we're always open and interested in that. So that helps you with written information. Let's see what else is in there.
Lisa, I have a question. I was going to ask, how come citizens' rates are lower than other carriers, but you answered that. So is there anything that the legislature can do in this special session to fix any of these problems, or is it going to take a longer period of time?
Andrew, Representative Learned?
There's lots of things they could do, Steve, the problem is what they're willing to do, right? You know, politics is a place dominated by lawyers, right? And, and our legislature is no exception to that. I think, overall, like, everybody knows where the problem is coming from, it's just a reluctance to be the one that does something about it. Because politically, it's really hard, right? Like, right now, a lot of Floridians are facing the need to, you know, get a claim paid, right? So the, the governor, the legislature doesn't want headlines about how the legislature's making it harder to get your claim paid, right? But again, this is the problem with when you were irresponsible for the last five years, not getting prepared for the storm, because now we're finding ourselves after one with a giant deficit that they got to pay, and a lot of people that are going to get pissed off, and the legislature's going to inevitably have to do something about it. I, I think that, you know, this special session, the fact that it's scheduled for two days pretty much tells you everything you need to know about how this is going to go. The legislature, let, let, let's be frank, the legislature has not even assigned committee chairmanships yet. So people don't even know what silo of issues they're responsible for, so somebody is about to find themselves in charge of insurance regulation a week before a special session where they're responsible for forcing through insurance regulation in two days. Steve, that's not going to happen, that's just not going to happen. This deal is being written in the back rooms of the governor's office as we speak, and it's going to be a one-man show, and that's the result of what happened in the last election, and this is what we're facing. So, we're going to hope for the best, but it's not going to be a process that we're going to have a lot of robust public comment about, for sure.
Thank you.
And I think it's going to take a symphony of voices, is a term that we use a lot in the legislative process. I spend my days talking to legislators, and regulators, and insurance companies, and agents, and consumers, and realtors, and contractors, and I just, I just talk on the phone and try to get, and listen to what people are saying, and everybody's, everybody either personally is affected by this crisis, they've lost their insurance coverage, they've seen their rates go up, they've got their grandmothers, their mothers, that are all suffering from this. So this isn't just like a one-off, this is pervasive across the state. So it's going to take engagement by our state leaders, as well as our grassroots, for people to say, I want to see change, and I'm going to hold you accountable, legislature, for you to make this change. Dana, help me look at other questions that are coming in, we're coming up on our adjournment time, I don't want to hold folks if that's, if we're close to a wrap.
We are close to a wrap, we have a couple more minutes left. I'm not seeing any questions, but I have a question. I actually, my insurance provider, my home insurance pulled out of the state of Florida, I was under Gulfstream, if y'all recognize them, and so, I only had, like, a couple weeks to find a new carrier, and citizens is the only one that would take me. Does that factor in to all of this? I mean, I, I just worry, like, at what point will there be insurance providers that will take me? My roof is a little bit old, but there's nothing wrong with it. And I did file a claim in, in the past, so I'm just wondering if anyone has any guidance on that.
Deb, what are your thoughts?
Unfortunately, your, the folks that are filing the roof claims have put you in a bad spot because you have the older roof. So you're now in a bucket of most likely to report a claim, right? And they're trying to mitigate risk, and mitigate the fact that there's going to be litigation. So, it's an unfortunate situation that you've been put in, but that's an example of what's wrong with the market, right? It's just too far gone right now. So, and I, my husband's been in the pricing business for several years, close to reinsurance, and, I mean, we, unless there's a significant change, we're not going to have new capital entering the market to create more opportunity and choice for you for some time.
And to follow on with that, Dana, so your roof was what, 12 or 14 years old, something like that?
Right around, yeah, about 15.
And that's where the, the solicitors, solicitors, they walk through neighborhoods, and they can see that your roof is about 15, they can look at certain factors, they're great at it, they're very creative, and they would come knock on your door and say, let me get your roof, your roof is old, oh, and that we've had some hail in this neighborhood. And you're standing there, and you're thinking, gee, I'll take a free roof. And like Andrew said, it's, everybody should be doing it, but nobody should be doing it. So, the insurance companies, they see you as a, you know, here she's got a 15-year-old roof, we don't really want her because she's going to get the knock on the door, and she's going to take the offer, and we'll be stuck paying for it when we shouldn't be. So, now, real quick, there is the My Safe Florida Home program, are you familiar with that, Dana?
Yes, yes, we've been promoting it.
Yeah, there's only about 7,000 people that have applied for it, so get in quick, and that may help you get eight, well, you have to come up, I think, $5,000, that's cheaper than a $30,000 roof, so get involved with that, and make sure you put something on your website about that, and call their 800 number, and get in the middle of that. That 800 number that I gave you, they can refer you to the My Safe Florida Home, folks, it's in the same agency.
Yeah, my understanding of the My Safe Florida Home program is, it's, there's, they're offering free wind inspections for anyone in the state of Florida, and for certain qualified folks who live in the windborne debris area, which is like a U around the coast, with, it goes pretty inland as well, can qualify for this, some grant money for repairs. And it's a two-to-one match, I think, for certain folks, and, but actually, no match if you qualify as low income. So we, we are promoting that program, that was, they recently opened applications, so I might not get to put a link in the chat here, but it, it's on, if it's not on our website yet, we'll put it there, for sure. It just, they just opened applications.
Rob's question about, I don't know anything about Rebuild Florida, I think that's a U, possibly.
Um, let me see.
And Rebuild Florida is different than My Safe Florida Home, Rebuild Florida comes from the Department of Economic Opportunity, and that's federal dollars coming down versus the state dollars with the My Safe Florida Home program. But we'll let Dana get those out on the website and answer that specific question. We're right here at 2:30, anything else, Dana? We'll call it a wrap, and I'm just so grateful. Deb, thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me.
Certainly.
Thank all of you all, you did a great job, thank you.
Representative Learned?
Thanks, Senator.
All right, glad to have you. Thank you, Dana, for the opportunity, always a pleasure to work with y'all. So we would love to hear what you think. You've heard some very distinguished guests talk about the upcoming special session, what's going on in our property insurance market here in Florida. And you also heard us encourage those that were participated in the webinar to contact the Speaker of the House, Paul Renner. Speaker Renner's office number is 850-717-5019. His email address is paul.renner@myfloridahouse.gov. And the Senate President, Kathleen Passidomo, from the Southwest Florida area, that's Senate President Kathleen Passidomo, her number is 850-487-5028. And her email address is passidomo, P-A-S-S-I-D-O-M-O dot Kathleen at flsenate.gov. And those two leaders are keenly interested in hearing from you, and what can be done to make it better, if you will, that's air quotes, with the Florida property insurance industry. So again, we have posted these leaders, the both House Leader and the Senate Leaders' phone numbers and emails in our show notes for your reference. So, we really want to hear from you. You've been such a great audience over the years, listening to the Florida Insurance Roundup. This special session is so very important, not only because of the crisis in the insurance market, but because consumers are hurting terribly with these increased rates that don't seem to know when they're going to stop, because the insurance commissioners are proving these rates to keep insurance company doors open. We'd like to know your experience with insurance claims, rising rates, or other issues that you would like to discuss, and what your suggestions are to make it, make them better. You can call us and leave your comment on our on-air Florida Insurance Roundup phone number, which is 850-388-8002. Again, that's 850-388-8002. And you can drop an email to me at lisamiller@lisamillerassociates.com, that's lisamiller@lisamillerassociates.com. And I also remind you to use our library on our website, we take great pains in putting information there for you, and we have our past newsletters and past podcasts. So, that's a wrap for this Florida Insurance Roundup. We probably won't record another one until next year, we just appreciate you being a part of our family. And remember, at our firm, Lisa Miller and Associates, we have a passion for policy and client success. And I'm Lisa Miller, and I am wishing you best, healthy holidays, and until next time, please stay safe.
This has been Lisa Miller and Associates Florida Insurance Roundup, your podcast on the people, issues, and regulations shaping Florida's insurance market. For more information on today's program, please visit us on the web at www.lisamillerassociates.com.